Things of order. And Reverend come forward and give the invocation, please.
Good evening. I'm the Reverend Bill Gilmore from Saint Mary's Episcopal Church on Benita Beach Road. Thank you for the privilege of being here today, Mr. Mayor. The Lord be with you in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Dear God, thank you for this day past, for blessings received, and the privilege to serve our neighbors in this community. Lord, let us accept any challenges that we face, not as obstacles, but as opportunities. Protect all first responders. Bless those that care for the sick and the lonely. And Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this state, county, or town of Benita Springs the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Laura Carr, would you lead a sinning pledge?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And City Clerk call roll, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Mayor, Mayor, Councilman Gibson just said he is on his way.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Now, tonight was supposed to be a workshop, and I don't know if there's any changes to the agenda tonight. Saying none, I guess we can move along. Mayor is welcome. You're all welcome. How many people here want to speak from the public? One? Two? Okay, very good. We have public comment on the agenda items at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, Dwight Estman, Paradise Road area. A small group, I'm going to read this because this was the statement that everyone agreed on.
I've got a little trouble hearing you, sir. Can you, it's a little fuzzy. I don't know.
Check, one, two.
Addison has straightened it out.
Check, one, two.
No, I'm, you want me to listen? You think it's my, I think he's, he's not far. Okay, I was thinking about, he was far. Okay, we'll try it again.
Check, one, two.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Addison.
As I said, I'm going to read this because this was a statement that was approved. "A small group of concerned citizens has been formed to provide input to the council on issues that come before them. We're calling ourselves the Benita Citizens Group. The group includes former council member John Spear, survey cafe owner Sophie LaRue, Wonder Gardens Board Member Bill Douglas, plus Sandy Gibbons, Shelley Anderson, Barbara Ogilvy, myself, and others. The first issue that we believe we can help with is what to do with the Old Bamboo Village property. We unanimously agreed that the council should consider two important factors. Public input is essential to the process. Several charrettes, and I hope I pronounced that correctly, where the public can express their views and suggestions, were held before the previous attempt to sell the property in 2007. There should be plenty of opportunity for the public, for people from all over the city, to give their input on what would work best for the city on this property. And parking has to be an important consideration because the Bamboo Village property is currently heavily utilized by the Wonder Gardens and every time there's a large event downtown. Without adequate parking, the events and businesses downtown will not be successful. We hope to have further recommendations in this, on this in the future, and other vitally important decisions. Thank you. Have a good evening."
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Price. I've been a resident of Benita Springs for about 20 years next month. I live on Matheson Avenue, close to Old Benita. I've heard it through the grapevine that there's a council feeling that they need to follow the obligations that the council made when they purchased the Bamboo property back in 2003. Back in 2003, things were vastly different than they are now in Old 41. I actually made a list the last couple of days of things that have happened on Old 41, and I was amazed at the list. So the, any consideration for the use of that property really needs to be made with what's happened in Old 41 and what can be done to further improve Old 41. Back in 2003, council jumped on the opportunity to buy that property because, number one, they needed something to jumpstart the first redevelopment of Old 41 that the county CRA had done before the city incorporated. Secondly, you had this rundown trailer park of 200 units right in the middle of town where they could have parked a sheriff's deputy right out front every night. It was that, it really was that bad. So the city had a chance to acquire that property and they jumped on it. Then they went through a charrette process and Anteramian, remember Mr. Anteramian came up in 2007, 2006, came up with a plan, the council jumped all over that plan. Luckily for us, that did not succeed. The recession came along, he withdrew his plans, and you got an opportunity to reconsider what should happen to that site. And I think it needs to have public input. I remember when we did the Lyles Hotel site, I think it was called Palm River, we had a number of charrettes, and the one thing that came out of all those meetings from everybody that attended was, they wanted to have access to the river. That was the one thing that was primary to everybody's mind, and we designed it around that request and those charrettes. So I recommend that you set up charrettes, you do your best to advertise, even if it becomes necessary to put up electronic signs on the roadways, and hold those charrettes and find out what the public thinks you should do with that property. Because what was planned back in 2003, I think is no longer valid, and you need to consider what it is now. At some future time, when you have time, I would be happy to go through the list. I think you would be amazed at the things that have happened on Old 41 in Benita. But I know your time is stressed, so I won't do that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, now we move on to consent agenda.
So move the agenda.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Down here, Amy.
Hello?
Down here, Amy.
Hi, Amy.
I just want to make a comment on the Bold Eagle Management Plan. When I had discussed it with John, it reminded me of an effort that had been advocated for by the council to somehow get a webcam on an eagle's nest. And I don't know if it would be possible to do that in this one that they're talking about here, but I think I would like to have the council at some future time discuss the fact whether we can pursue that. I think we had allocated some money. I know the eagle's nest that we were going to use in on the tree got taken down in Irma, and that was the end of it, but I don't know if we wanted to see if we could pursue that.
I think that's awesome.
Sorry. It just recalled that effort. I know we had money in the budget at one time to do that, but we didn't do it.
Yes, Jesse.
I'd just like to-
We get one shot, we're going a little different, excuse me, Jesse. We're doing a little different tonight. We get one shot at the apple, one bite at the apple. You know, we're not going to have a conversation back and forth like we did last time. So give us your best right now, Jesse.
I conditionally agree to those terms, and I would like to say that I agree with Amy. I think that would be awesome. An eagle cam would be really cool, something I'd support.
Go ahead. Are you done?
That's it.
Jesse?
Yep.
You have anything, Laura?
We'll give one motion and a second, and Amy just wanted to make a comment, so I think we have a vote.
Well, at this time, this is just comments on consent agenda items. If you would like an item to be discussed for, getting ahead of myself on your rules of procedure, but if you'd like an item to be discussed and brought back for consideration at a future meeting, we could add that to a future meeting agenda, or you could discuss it further at your member reports.
Well, then I do have something. I want to thank Councilman Ford, Fred Forbes, I'm sorry, for covering the CHRE, it's such a weird acronym, C-H-R-E, the Charlotte County Harbor, and I want to know if anybody on council could step up and do the next two meetings, which are scheduled arbitrarily, because I'm on that committee and I can't commit to that, so just start it out there and we can discuss it at other meetings when we know when it is. But thank you, Fred.
We have to vote, don't we? We're to be voted on the consent agenda.
Anybody else? Want to make your comment?
No, they haven't voted on.
Yeah, we do need to vote. I think you can go.
Okay. Mayor and council member items?
I do not have any. I have no items.
No items from a city attorney, city manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, what I wanted to discuss with you is, as we adjourn from this meeting shortly, you do have an option. Typically, our workshops are held in a different format with a sort of a roundtable. We were able to utilize the Old Rec Center for that. If you would like to, when we recess, move into the Old Rec Center for that, for the continuation of the workshop. But we do need to let you know that we would not be able to broadcast live if we move into that room, because the setup isn't here to broadcast live. So if we do have a brief recess, it's the council's choice whether you'd like to recess the workshop in there or continue at this location.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second.
To do what? What's the motion?
But don't we need to, like, approve things?
The motion is to, after the recess, to move to the, to do the workshop in a more collegial setting in the Old Rec Center.
It's a smaller room.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're there. Okay, there's a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, I will object to that. I think there's a lot of people that are interested in that workshop item. I see no reason not to have it televised. We can do a workshop in here just as well as we can in the other location, and there may be people here this evening that would, that came here specifically to observe that workshop, so I don't particularly think that's a good idea.
We would have seating available in the other room for any public in attendance.
Well, we can't televise it.
So we would not be able to televise it now.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, when we get done with the vote, I did forget to make an announcement. Before we adjourn, just let me do that, if you would afford me the opportunity.
We still have mayor and council members' reports.
Good.
Debbie, I think you can go ahead and call it all.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye. Mayor and Council, the other item I just wanted to discuss is to kind of give you a little reminder, and we'll be coming back for further direction, but during the reopening of many of our businesses from COVID, we worked, we had discussed with council, sort of relaxing a little bit on the sort of stick-in-the-mud sides and flag signs, so that people could let them know that they were open because of the reopening of everything. We are starting to get some complaints regarding those. They are not consistent with the land development code, so we'll be starting to afford some education on that, unless we receive further direction from council, you'd like to consider relaxing that. But we feel that the time has kind of come from COVID that we can start coming back to educating everyone again on the appropriate signage. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. I agree, the law, if one person breaks the law, then the other people wants to break the law, and then we don't have any laws at all, so. Okay, approval of the minutes of 1:20, 21?
Mayor, we still have the mayor and council member reports.
Okay, I thought that's what we were going through. Mayor and council reports, anybody?
Yeah, I have one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was on a Zoom advocacy committee meeting of the Florida League of Cities today, and two or three things came up. In fact, I'm going to take my hearing aid off here, because I'm getting the feedback. There's two bills right now that are very, very invasive to city home rule and actually for county home rule. And let me, and they're asking everybody to pitch in on this. Number one, they've got a bill with a lot of momentum. That means it's got a lot of people up there that can vote yes, that want to vote yes on this, that are going to pass a bill, unless we stop them, that makes anyone be able to have a home business out of their home, no matter where it is, with no city or county regulation. Nothing. Who knows? Nothing. So one way, and it's being done under the cover that a lot of people work from home because of COVID, that's different than operating a home business. And that means that you couldn't regulate when you open, when they close, you couldn't open, people refinishing boats in their backyard, whatever their business is, chemicals stored in places they shouldn't be, all those things would be, we could not touch if this bill goes through. So one thing they're wanting people to do, and I'll be happy to get a list that we can have available, where you write one email and send it to every state representative and every state senator. And actually, rather than people like myself or other people on council opposing it, which we normally do, the more, more people that send an email up there, either for or against it, it's, it means more to them, because that's voters. I'm one vote. Councilman Gibson, one vote. Corey, one vote. But you represent lots of them. And then they also want HOAs to have their board of directors write letters saying, "We represent," like Benita Bay, about 4,000 members, memberships, or 8,000 people, whatever, "we are opposed to this." So that's one bill. The other bill is one that most people are familiar with, but it's the same thing. No city regulation, no county regulation on what's called short-term rentals. That's where people rent out rooms in their houses for short term. That's one day, a week, 10 days, two weeks, whatever, or a whole house. But they also, there's no hotel tax usually collected on those things, but there's a lot of parties and a lot of noise and all that. So that bill also has big momentum. So I'll get, I'll get the list of everybody that you can send letters to or emails to, which is simple. And you can do one of those emails where you put the whole list in one and send it one time. Anyway, we need to, I'm just warning you that that is going through. It's one, every year, there's bad bills, and that's one. That bill passed last year, and I think the governor vetoed it, I believe. So anyway, I just want to make everybody aware of that. Thank you.
Well, so Fred, are you gonna?
No, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
So Fred, are you gonna, like?
Would you ask permission first? Would you ask me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're not sorry. Come on, come on. Say what you're going to say, Laura.
I am sorry that I didn't do it appropriately. May I ask a question?
Don't be, don't be foolish. You've already embarrassed yourself once, now go ahead and answer your question.
Okay. I'll stop, I'll, I promise. Fred, are you going to put out something on your website that people can attach their name to and sign on to?
Well, I can, I can give you a draft letter, I can give you the Florida League of Cities talking points, you can copy and paste those off, or you could just take a point here and there and put your own work. Lot of times, people have good words themselves. Somebody last year said, "What we're going to have is a rental hood instead of a neighborhood." But you know, like Hickory Island, they would be affected a lot by that. But also, any of, any of the places in town, I mean, we all, this is paradise. People pay money to come to paradise, and-
Does it supersede the HOA?
It can affect the HOAs too, yes. If we, if we have anything on the books that was passed prior to 2011, right now, that would still stay in effect. But if this passes the next year, they'll come back and say, "We want to take it back to 2007 before," so. It's, it's a big thing. It was a big thing last year. The governor, I believe, is the one who vetoed it, stopped it. But it's got momentum again, and you've got other things going on, so it might slip through. And the home businesses might slip through, you don't know. So it's best off to let them know how the masses feel. Masses equal votes. They have to get reelected.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor? I'd just like to point out that just because the mothership's agenda is one way, doesn't necessarily mean that that's, needs to be ours. So I would say that when you're talking about short-term rentals, there's a lot of regulations in regards to short-term rentals. You're talking Airbnb, and, and you can put parameters in there that allow it without outright banning them, because you're talking about people's private property rights. You have a right to rent out your house, and for us to try to say that they can't because we don't like it, because there might be a party, that might be your opinion, but that doesn't mean that that needs for us to create policy based on that opinion. Furthermore, this idea about regulating so that people can't run businesses out of their homes, I fundamentally don't agree with that. I, I don't know why we always think it's our place to put in extra barriers to entry to people to get into the marketplace. Half our country, more than half our country right now is operating remotely from home. So I don't know necessarily, once again, that the mothership and my ideology are on the same page there, but I would encourage people to reach out, for sure.
Yes.
Well, I fundamentally disagree with Jesse on this one, because it's always in the interest of city councils to protect the life, safety of our residents. Short-term rentals present certain safety hazards in terms of who rents the property, what activities are conducted. It's the appropriate place for city council to be able to regulate, and much like it is, city council can regulate what businesses are allowed in what neighborhoods. So I support Fred and his views on this topic.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Down here.
Yes, Mayor.
I, I agree with the concern that has been raised by Councilmember Forbes. In fact, I've been in communication with Ashley and Carol Green in regard to several bills that are coming forward. These were two of them that I've questioned them about. So thank you for pointing out that they're moving aggressively through it in the legislature. Could you provide some details as to the actual bills that they are, you know, the numbers of HB, or the set of bill, and then also provide a link to us, or have Arlene provide a link to us to the Florida League of Cities information, so that we could pass them along, along to our constituency?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be happy to do that, and if somebody supports some of these, that's what life is all about. You can write a letter of support. Big thing is, they need to hear what the people think. I personally am against both these, but.
Excuse me. We have a situation where we have personal property, a person's home and his castle, so to speak. Now, if he has his mother-in-law move in for six months, maybe she contributes to the welfare of the household by paying something to the head of the household. Now, is that considered rent?
No. No, that's not, no, that's different.
Wait a minute now, who's going to regulate this?
The state will regulate it. That's the problem. We don't get to regulate anything.
The state is not going to regulate it. We have a hard time regulating our own rental permitting.
Mr. Mayor?
We're seeing some problems that may or may not exist. We still have noise ordinances and stuff. We can, we can try, you can try, we all, I'm not going to bother, because I believe in freedom, but you can try to stop this. Be more power to you. Mr. Attorney?
What I, what I would recommend, since this is, this seems to be an issue that needs more information, that perhaps I can work with Councilman Forbes to present the draft bill for further discussion at a future meeting, and therefore, if the council in its, in its total role wants to take a position, they can be free to do that. Obviously, individual members can, can, can write letters to their legislators, but maybe it'd be helpful if we had the bill and everyone had a chance to look at it.
Let me add a little bit more. I live in a condominium, and the condominium law says you can rent, but only have one month at a time. In our particular case, it's three one-month rentals. And this is to protect the people that live there from having, living in a hotel and a motel. So years ago, we tried to eliminate all renters for, because people come in, they're there, they pay, they pay outrageous amount of money to be, to be on the beach, so to speak, but they don't know the rules, they don't care about the rules, they don't care about anybody sometimes. Sometimes they're nice. We've been very fortunate that we get some renters, year after year, and after, of course, I, I happen to be the innkeeper, since I'm the only one that lives there full-time, and I, I get to tell them, "Oh, no, you can't do that," or, you know. Some, a lot of people like it, and some people don't, but that's the way it is. So it will affect, I believe it'll affect the condominium laws, like Beach and Tennis Club on the corner, they're allowed to rent for three days in a row, but not less. Most of the condominiums on Benita Beach are allowed to rent for one month at a time, not, not a week. There's a lot of different regulations that the state, these are state laws. Now, whether they're going to wipe them all out, I'm not certain. So Ashley, and we ought to get our lobbyists involved as much as possible, inform us as much as possible. The session ends when, I don't know when, they, they only meet for a short, short period of time, but we need to pull the people in so we understand what, what we might be getting into. When we started out in the city, we wrote, we wrote a rental ordinance, because we had 10 cars in a duplex, we had 20 people living in a duplex, and we, the city decided that was not right, and we did inspections, rental inspections, say, "Well, your Toyota doesn't work, you got to fix that before you can rent." Different things. Now- out as a city, we wrote, we wrote a rental ordinance because we had 10 cars in a duplex. We had 20 people living in a duplex, and we, the city decided that was not right. And we did inspections, rental inspections, say, well, your Toyota doesn't work. You gotta fix that before you can rent. Different things. Now, that could be considered overreach. It's a big, you're getting into a gray area. And like I said with, with the code enforcement last, last meeting, if somebody's got trash in their yard, it's their yard. Do we have the authority to tell them, no, you can't have your kids' toys out in the yard overnight? Where does this stop? So I think we should investigate this. And Fred, do what you, do whatever you can. It'd be nice if this whole situation disappeared and we go back to where we were with our, with our home rule. And anybody else have anything to say about it? I'm done. Thank you. Okay. Are we up to a move? Approval of the minutes now?
We are.
So move. Second? I second it.
I'm sorry, we're on the minutes?
Huh?
I'm sorry.
The minutes, 1:20, 21?
And Deb, we discussed, and you checked it out?
Yes, and I reviewed it with Carly, and it was these, the, the motion as reflected in the minutes.
What was the vote in the end?
Six, one.
Okay.
Motion and second. Can I roll call? Anybody else?
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilman Corey?
Pass.
But this is, this is in the minutes?
I could pass. I want to hear what, I couldn't hear what Laura's objected to.
We're just approving the minutes.
She hasn't objected to the minutes.
If you want, I can highlight.
Approval of the minutes?
Laura, did you object to approval of the minutes?
I do, because when I look at the minutes, there was a motion that actually Mike made and Mayor Steinmeier seconded regarding the signage of Aspen Dentistry.
Yeah, I couldn't tell whether you voted for it or against.
I know, and you were very confused. But council, our, our, our city attorney did clarify what, how I did it. Amy started out saying, I vote no, meaning I don't want the sign. Jesse confirmed. I voted yes, meaning I said it was okay for them to have the sign. You were confused as to why I would vote yes.
Yeah, because the motion was to deny.
And, and attorney, right.
Motion was to deny. And that's what's in the minutes, right? That's what, is that the correct minutes? You voted against that, right?
Well, because then, when I listened to the minutes again, when I reviewed it on air four times, it sounded as if Chris said no, Mike said yea, Fred said yea. So I asked Debbie to check out, because of the confusion, perhaps both Mike and Fred voted no, even though they said yea. And so Debbie did do that. And they both voted against having the ability of Aspen having the sign on. So as long as Debbie did that, that's fine. But when I view the meeting in real time, and in actual time in my head, I'm sorry, Mike, you voted yea or nay?
I, I had made the motion, and it was a motion to deny, so I voted aye to deny.
But then Amy changed how the vote was taken. Okay, so that was where I think the confusion came in.
If I may, I think there was, it was, might have been hard to hear. Some people said deny. I believe Amy said I vote to deny. And then I think Councilman down on the end said aye. But I'd be happy if you want to table this till the next meeting, we can review it again.
No, I mean, it was, the motion didn't pass anyway. It was just, it's just a point of record because when we then finished reading through our packet, while Fred Forbes said we should do the video as being our, our end-all, well, that's not what our, our charter calls for. Charter calls for minutes. So you correct the minutes at the time, or you leave them uncorrected. And that's at least how I read how our charter reads, existing now. So I disagree with how, I mean, but it doesn't matter. I mean, the motion didn't pass. I just thought the way they voted wasn't recorded properly. And if, if you both say now that it was, I'll support the record. So you voted against the signage?
Against the signage.
Fred, you're against the signage as well?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I, I mean, I do not object to the minutes.
Shall we, shall we start this again?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, you have a public comment? Anybody from the public here to comment? All you people at home watching on TV, hello? Come on up, sir. All you people on, watching on TV, I hope there's a bunch of them because they're not all here. Fifty-some thousand people in Benita. I hope somebody's paying attention to us. Yes, sir?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Alex Grant, I'm here to try to encourage the city council, either by ordinance or to meet with the Benita Springs Fire and Rescue Control District in an emergency meeting to be able to schedule using six fire stations in Benita Springs for a distribution of the vaccine, hopefully Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is a one-shot for the virus, which is supposedly 86% good, effective for even the coronavirus that is the strain that comes in from South Africa. But anyway, I have for each of you a statement that I had made in public comment last month on June, uh, June, on January 11th, 21, for a description of how to distribute the virus from vaccine, virus vaccine at each of the six fire stations with available bays. You will see that, and you can determine what you think of it. But basically, what it is, it's having a program where we buy a neighborhood within the two or three square-mile area of that particular fire station. And you would have, by neighborhood block area, a, the people that would come into the fire station, get their vaccine, and then go out the front bay of the fire station. The reason I am saying this, we are going to have a major emergency with a life and death situation in this city. And we need to be able to inoculate as many people in this city as possible. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to get in touch with me. I'll be happy to work with any of the council people or any people on the Fire Commission in order to get this established. But I think this needs to be done ASAP, preferably by the first of the month. I do not believe there should be a trouble with the fire district being able to distribute these vaccines to our population. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Alex.
Good evening again.
Yeah.
I'm not speaking for the group. I'm speaking for myself right now. I strongly urge you not to move this meeting to an offline location. There are several members that I, several people that I know that want to hear what the council has to say about the Bamboo Village property. Your agenda also says that you can watch this meeting online. If it was going to be offline, I think it should have been made very clear in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll just, just add to that. The meeting will be recorded. It just won't be broadcast live because our live setup equipment is here.
To make it clear, it will, to make it clear, it will not be video recorded. There will be a voice recording.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we, our next city council meeting will be February 17th, 2021. Any other business before the council at this time? Shall we adjourn? Thank you.